Hey, Councilor, how you doing? That item number seven.
May I be called by the number one? What's the other inside?
Yeah, I love it inside.
Now, he said, well, he wrote the church.
Well, I was told to go with the information.
Chair, no, no, no term. You know, uh... I think no term. For the term. Isn't that your show? Yeah.
Councilor, you don't need surprise. You don't need surprise, Councilor.
Uh, not today.
Councilor, you don't need surprise.
I need.
You want it? I know, but he, he, he been so tired of, I'm, I'm tired of being too tired. Yeah. I didn't talk to him about that. Good afternoon, going on the call. Work session to order. At this time, I ask you to look good about your head. Heavenly Father, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you for what I must say another day. Oh, Heavenly Father, we ask you to bless our city, bless everyone who is under all this, not only them, but also the families. Oh, Heavenly Father, we ask you to join us in this mission, regulate our hearts and our minds, and this blessing has to be made. Now, to the citizens' request, Mr. Dave Fullford, June. Funding requests for housing repair.
Our organization, Blackberry, sent you a couple houses.
Mr. Chris, please turn that back.
We're requesting some funding for your housing repair program. Our goal for housing is twenty-five houses per year. And we have a group of students that are coming in from the University of Oregon and another group that come in. So, we got twenty-four students that are supervised that are coming from universities for two thousand and nineteen. And it's our twentieth anniversary of Blackberry. For twenty years, we've been doing housing rehab in, uh, Seville, Dallas County. We're requesting, if possible, that Councilor give us a thousand dollars for, to help us with the housing program. We got twenty-four students. They're coming, uh, March, the first week of March and the last. They normally come down during the Jubilee time. And so, we need some funding to help with some housing and some supplies for that. Uh, you can see on the documentation that I gave you, there's a budget of five thousand. We are asking for one thousand.
All right, Mr. Fullford, Senator, first, uh, thank you. In the past, I know I've seen you on our screen, uh, with remodeling house, house, homes and everything. Uh, I know you have young people with you. And I feel that it would be, if, if it's coming back to council members, they would help with this endeavor because it helps with supporting the lives, you know, in the community. Replanting homes. Want to say thank you again for supporting this project.
Thank you, officer.
Hold on.
Mr. Fullford, I want to thank you for, um, the renovations that you've done and worked for. Uh, it certainly has, it, it helps the council when you can do some of the work that you are doing inside, uh, all of the wars. And I appreciate that. Are you still doing the same thing, um...
Yes, and matters like that, asking if you all need, at least district, if you, uh, want us to, where you have to be cleaning up and the parks and everything else. We're getting their agenda together, so any, any day, or also wherever they be, we can do what we can. We have a date that we set aside for each group, do some community work, but the primary reason that they come, we want to help keep the city safe. There's so many houses, I just say. And since then, we've already joined in with the USDA. We'll build two houses from the ground up. And that's the follow-two program. We got one that we just built in, uh, the large USDA. And so, we're part of, we're trying to make this, uh, Seville surrounding area look better. And so, we're committed, we've been doing it for twenty years, nineteen ninety-nine to now, and we never stop. Every year, we do.
I know, and we support you every single year because the work you, you do, uh, it helps us, um, when we can't get certain things done, you go out and do it with your group. And you have a very large group that always comes every year, so thank you so much.
Is this the contact, if I may, is that...
Uh, yes, it, yes, it, yes, sir.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Fullford? Any other questions for Mr. Fullford? Thank you, Mr. Fullford.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Henry Allen, retirement paid by Mr. Allen. Please go to the floor.
Kind of president of the board and of council member, and also the president of the rest of our unit. I'm here on behalf of, uh, down on State Retirement Association. They send a memo out to all members that the thirty-first of October is the deadline. If, uh, no funds are received upon that day, then we'll be, uh, aborted forever. And so, I talked with council members concerning the matter, and I think that always, that money's always been appropriated for, and they need to take it forward. So, I'm here to leave it there, to make it, make known, knowing that it didn't take place in the future forever. And that if they know my hand pad on there, that you can call them and, and let them know what you want to do.
Okay, uh, council, council members, it's already in the budget. And in the past, the only thing we need to do was go ahead and, uh, put it in a resolution form, and I was getting with the term now, uh, in the past. That's how we move forward with the, uh, president of the town.
Yes, sir.
President, if you recall, several months back, uh, the retirement system sent us a letter...
Yes, sir.
To this effect. They also indicated we would get the other money.
They would pay it.
They would pay it up front for us, and we would reimburse them later on.
Yes, sir.
On cause of the financial situation that we're occurring facing, I would highly recommend that we take a look at the offer. And let's go ahead and approve the retirement system payment as upfront, and hopefully, we can remit payment to them on that.
Yes, sir, we can do it, uh, Tuesday night, be a resolution. Uh, I've already talked about the term now and about it, and hopefully, we bring it Tuesday night. All right, are there any other questions? For Chief Allen? You have a question?
Agent, what is it?
You don't have any.
All right, any other questions for Chief Allen? All right, thank you, Chief. We're coming here a little more Tuesday night. All right. Attorneys' report. As you can see, attorney now is, uh, off at a conference. We have, uh, nine items, uh, up on this, the attorneys' report. Items number one, two, three, and four. Council members, I think, what's the pleasure of the council? If we go ahead and put them on the sound members? Volunteer, Saturday, that's it. Yes, one, two, three, and four.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Could, could we just identify the scope of this resolution? What we're doing according to this resolution?
Which one?
Resolution R-oh-seven eighteen slash nineteen. Resolution approved, budget approved.
Okay, yes, sir.
Just to live and identify what we're doing with this, uh, we are, we are reinstating displaced workers that shouldn't have been displaced. And these, and these displaced workers represent several departments. Recreation Department, Laborer John Walker. Recreation Department, Laborer Terry Ward. Personnel Department, Administration Assistant Judy Porter. Public Works Laborer John Lawson. City Clerks Office, Senate Straight of Mind, and Court of Forceman Officer Lawrence. So, what we're doing is reinstating these people back to their original position because they never should have taken that job.
Also, um... Also, items five, six, seven, eight, and nine, attorney now bring, bring for us, I guess, yeah, why I, uh, but I let the attorney now go over there, those items. Also, two council members on Tuesday, we will go into executive session to discuss, uh, lawsuits and also some legal matters.
This tomorrow, Mr. President?
Sir?
This tomorrow?
No, sir, it's going to be Tuesday, council. All right, to the business items. Um, Councilman Allen and Sheldon, Councilman Youngblood, not here. Uh, Councilman Randolph, this is item number two, no layoff.
Yes, uh, a while back, uh, I want to say, um, almost two years ago? I, I had mentioned that, uh, I would like Seville to be a no layoff city. And, uh, because I knew what was headed to, and I just wanted to, uh, bring that back up to the council. Because, uh, uh, our employees about to be laid off because, uh, Van Damm, that the mayor got against the council. And that's not fair to our employees. So, I want to also put it in record that we, uh, no layoff city, unless, uh, you do something to get fired or something, you get fired, but we won't lay anybody off. Because, uh, you know, our, our employees are citizens as well. You know, their taxpayers, uh, as well, you know? And I hate somebody playing with people's family livelihood and playing with people's emotions because that's not fair. So, uh, uh, council, how, how y'all think about being a no layoff city?
I agree.
I agree, frankly, how, how can you enforce that if you don't have money in the bank to pay them? This would just be, no, 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 council. This is realistic. I'm not saying personally about this city, any city. You cannot have a no layoff policy if you don't have money in the bank to pay them. It would be hypocritical even impose a policy such as this. It don't really make sense to me. I mean, I would really say that a new city would have to lay off their employees, but realistically, you have to look at what your finances are, and you have to go through this in the bank.
Well, you, you... I don't even know, I'm talking to you no more, Mr. Show. I don't, I've been trying, I'm, I'm, I'm serious. I, me and you, me and you homeboy, I'm gonna keep it real, but, uh...
Keep it real, sir.
Um, 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 I'm thinking, I had to put myself in time out. But anyway, uh, I know what you're saying, you know, that's, that's, that's all very good, but, uh, the city got money. You know, we got money. I can see if we're broke and, uh, uh, we didn't have any money, but what we can state is from the mayor, who's not the financial advisor to us. And then, the mayor going meet with the keeper downstairs and, uh, uh, have a little meeting with them, say, this what we're gonna, this what we're gonna, uh, present. That's not right. The mayor shouldn't be in that, trying to, uh, it shouldn't be in finance office anyway. It's just like some preachers in the church. They want to, they want to be the pastor of church, they want to write check, when they get ready to write checks, uh, do what they want to do with finance. That's not right. But, uh, I'm thinking about our, 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 uh, our employees. If we don't have money, guess what I would do? With, with all these contracts and services, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying cutting those services out to these people out here. Like, we got the YMCA, we got the Save the Sanctuary, we got the American Red Cross, we got the Car Harbor Men of Hell. All, all these people, uh, that we getting money to, and, but nobody saying, since we in, uh, a, a dire strait, let's cut some funding. Not cutting everything from, but let's take some money from them so we can do what we got to do to stay afloat, if that's a problem. But, um, I just don't understand that, I'm a people person, I'm an employee person. I'm looking out for our employees. If we, if we got people out here not looking out for employees, hey, I don't, I don't know what to say because I'm, I'm, I'm done for. But, uh, I'm, I'm not going to say nothing else, Mr. Show, on this, but I just, Mr. President, I hope we can bring this up for a vote at council meeting, be a no layoff city. If, if Mr. Show don't want to vote for it, he don't vote for it.
I would, I would support that initiative, I want to issue, that we would stipulate no, no layoff, invited to have funds to pay that employees. That stipulation has to be included in order for me to support this. Because if we don't have money, then this no layoff policy is done, it's not worth the paper's revenue.
Got it? Councilman Randolph?
I don't want no stipulation there. I want no layoff policy, that's it. No stipulation. Because if we, if we come to, if we, I, I'm just throwing this out, uh, the mayor ever was there during the recession, everybody took a little pay cut. Everybody, you know, do, do some things besides trying to hurt people from the get-go. That, that's just, that's not right. If, if, if we, if we are struggling like we are, say, okay, okay, let's go from, uh, forty-hour work week to, uh, thirty-five-hour work week. It, it's mean, there's ways you can do this thing without trying to hurt people livelihood, hurt people's family, because I don't care what you're saying. It's coming up to the holiday, and, 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 uh, I, I don't understand the logic behind this. You get rid of the finance, uh, the tr, the treasure, then all of a sudden, we don't have any money. But you got rid of hustle, you can throw up this smoke screen. But we need to bring her back so we can get a, a true picture, because we don't know what going on. Nobody up there know nothing. No, nobody, nobody don't know nothing. If you was, you was banking what you own a bank, but till we have somebody in that trash office, it, it don't make no sense. And then, that's how you know the mayor is up for no good. He let the finance department go at three o'clock today. And they know we trying to get these checks tomorrow. He let them go at three o'clock, and y'all don't see no smoke screen and that? And I doubt, he might tell them they have tomorrow also, they won't be covering right no check. That's not right. That's, that's what I'm saying. We got to stand up. I don't care what y'all say, y'all might like the mayor or whatever, I like the mayor. But we got to do what's right for our, uh, our employees. Because I don't want to see nobody, uh, uh, not get paid. You know, I'm gonna tell you sometime, back in the day, I used to live from paycheck to paycheck. If I miss a paycheck, Lord have mercy, y'all know how we do? We, we write a check on, uh, on, uh, on, uh, Thursday and say, well, I get paid tomorrow, I'm getting that check. You know, y'all know, I'm serious, that's how we do. I, 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 I used to do that too. I, I'm not saying, but, but we got to look out for our employees, because, you know, you got people, got, uh, direct deposit coming out there, they, they, uh, bank account, bank account, no, house, no. You know, no folks don't want to hear, the, the, uh, the, the loan officer at the bank don't want to hear, well, uh, I worked two weeks, uh, loan officer, but, uh, they ain't paying me. They don't want to hear that.
That's right. Hold on, we got council on, then, then, Councilman Show.
Mr. President, uh, agenda item number six is related to, uh, closely related to councilman Randolph's item, so that is why I raised my hand. Um, I'm looking at a, um, memo that we received around two-thirty, I guess, today, um, two-thirty-four P.M. today. And this memo is in the email. This memo records, um, as of today, October eighteenth, total amount of account payable invoices, Mr. President. It also has, um, total amounts of revenue, uh, and it says general fund, tax, tax collection account. And then, I'm, I'm, I'm sitting here, and as I read this email, I'm looking for, I'm looking for the report from our gas tax. I'm looking for unreported taxes. I'm looking for cash amounts that are in tax and license that have been deposited. I'm looking for amounts of checks that have been brought into tax and license. I'm looking for this on here. I'm looking for, uh, general fund, cash on hand. I'm looking at all these notes I made to myself, and my head was swimming as I read this memo, um, um, this memo from, I don't know whose initial that, I don't know whose initial that is. Um, how has accounts payable been keyed in? Has accounts payable been keyed in, is another note that I wrote to myself. Drop downs from American, you know, we pay them in advance, has that drop down faded here yet? And if for some reason, it hasn't been deposited. Uh, other payments that, that come in, I don't see that in this memo. I see two items. Non-specific items.
Self-tax won't come in, top of twenty second on the mic, correct?
I see non-specific items, I don't see gas tax, or I don't see a portion of the franchise fee, um...
And lower than tax?
I don't, I don't see a lot of stuff coming out of tax and license and how accounts payable has keyed in stuff. And if we have made deposits lately, Mr. President, as we need to sit, uh, to put some safeguards in place, that's right, Mr. President. On Tuesday, when it's official for, or tomorrow, or whenever, when it's official for us to vote, for those of you out there tonight who are new to council meeting, we can't vote tonight because it's a work session. But what I'm saying, when we can vote, we, we need to put some safeguards in place so that we will be able to see what is going on for ourselves. Because it is our responsibility to see what's going on for ourselves. And I know, Mr. President, from talking to you on the day, we're going to make some things happen because there's an immediate thing that has to happen. Uh, when that treasure get back, gets back in that seat, uh, we need to go back and fix, uh, what some people think is broken, and it's not.
Councilor Show?
Yeah, as you all very well know, for the last three or four years, this city has been receiving decreasing revenue. And when we began to process the budget, uh, prepare the budget, we knew that they had discussed. I was proposing that this council put some skin in the game, to show some real seriousness about the finance of our city. And that we give up all of our discretionary, including the mayor, which would have matched to a hundred thousand dollars. Give up all of our travel, which two thousand five hundred a piece, not much, but a hundred and thirty thousand dollars could do a long way in our budgetary process. I'm going to once again ask for a budget amendment that all discretionary be eliminated with the process of buying a piece of equipment that this city is so badly need. We are hurting for money, y'all, and y'all can pay these gang all you want. And I've told y'all more than once, separate costs without a million dollars on paper, that don't mean it's in the bank. And once it's set into your mind to understand the budgetary process in order that you got to have real cash money in order to do business, then, and only then, you going to realize we're in trouble. We in trouble.
Councilman, Randolph, and Councilman.
Let me, let me say this one more time, uh, um... Mr. Show, I understand what you're saying, but that, you know, you talking like, you talking like somebody that meet with the mayor. See, I don't meet with the mayor. You, you talking like somebody, that's what he'll say. What you're saying, that's what he'll say. I ain't attacking you. Yes, okay, I tell you, if you have issues, go meet with the mayor.
I don't, that's why, we don't understand. All of the council people, when you have issues, go talk to the mayor. That's what you need to do, Mr. Randolph, instead of getting into this arena, going point, counterpoint, with things that you don't particularly like with the mayor, he just not right for you, you so disrespectful. I, I ain't no disrespect. I, I, I'm always saying, I'm going to look out for our employees. I don't want to hear no excuses. Man, you know what? You a military man, just like me.
That's right.
When I deal with my soldiers, I tell them, don't come to me with no excuses. Get the job done. I don't want to hear nothing.
This ain't no military base.
Well, no, it ain't gotta be no military. But what I'm saying, you know, you, 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 you know, the, like I said, the mayor is full of crap. You just got to say it and stop trying to take up for him. He's in the financial committee, finance for home, the day at three o'clock, thinking we finna do a special call meeting so they can get ghosts, so they won't have to write no check for the employee. Is that, that's wrong. It's no way to sugarcoat it. That is wrong. I, I guarantee you, he probably told him, no, he come tomorrow. But what we need to do, Mr. President, we need to get a court injunction on this. Stop playing games with these folk.
Right away.
Get a court injunction right away, bring Ms. Wade back, because she know what we got. And Ms. Wade said, we ain't got no finance, I, I believe it. But for the folks, uh, these old fake memo they get, and folk have, they put their vision on because they scared of their job, I don't want to see that. I want to hear the truth from our treasure. And the treasure is a neutral person. She don't take side with the council, she don't take side with the mayor. She just tell it like it is. And, and that's what we missing. We missing somebody who telling us like it is. And that's not right for us, that's not right for our constituents, that's not right for our employees. Because I'm telling you, if no people getting paid tomorrow, we'll be mad as hell. I'm telling you, I'm, I'm, you talking about mad, I'm a mad, mad to the thirty-fifth degree, Mr. President. I'm telling you.
Hold on, hold on, we got councilwoman, councilwoman, and then we moving on to work.
Speaking, speaking of cash on hand, um, that's, that's another thing we need to find out, um, in our general fund, cash on hand, Mr. President, as we seek to find out what is really going on. We know that we have money in, um, the banks here in Seville. We know that we have money in, uh, the banks here in several amount. We know that we have money, uh, that can cover payroll on tomorrow. Uh, we know that because home concerts have been made. And we, uh, we know all of this. Uh, we've known it from the beginning. We know what this is all about. We know that what this discussion is all about. It's not specifically about the payroll checks of the people in this audience. It's about the payroll checks of others who don't have the same payroll check that they used to have. So, Mr. President, we need to fix this at the special call meeting that you're calling on tomorrow. We need to make, we need to make sure that payroll is covered on tomorrow. And if, if people are sent home, they're supposed to write checks on tomorrow, then it's a problem, another problem we're gonna have to face, uh, Mr. President. There's another problems that we're gonna have to face. We, we need someone that's watching our back. We need someone that's watching our back. Whether we get a bonded person in our office that can see what's going on. A bonded person in the council office that can see what's going on, like our administrator, assistant, or whoever. And, Mr. President, you need to be able to set your eyes on what's going on as well. As the president of this council, you need to be able to set your eyes on what's going on at these, at these banks.
Mr. President.
And, and finally, uh, when money is moving the amount of a million dollars or more, Mr. President, that needs to come before the council. We need to know why.
That's right.
When money in the amount of, in the amount of a million dollars or more is moved around. And so that million dollars or more, we don't need it all. It's our way. We don't have to borrow to pay, uh, payroll. Got money in the bank. Let's pay it.
Uh, councilwoman, um, Thomas?
Uh, I just wanna say this because it's been like an anxiety attack right now with this, dealing with these people getting their money. These people have worked and these are working people that worked for the past almost two weeks. And this is no game. People are due to their money. I know Councilman Shaw is saying, he's been saying this since he's been here, but I have been here come November, be two years. And I don't even know, it has never came to our attention as the council being the fin, over the finance to know what shape we are in and what point we at. Cause it should have never came to this point where these people already worked all these hours. Cause I'm, I stand with the people. Because working peoples are entitled to what they work for. It's not your choice to make to say, I've worked my forty hours and then on Friday, when I come, a week or two, three days before I get ready to get paid, you say, we don't have no money. This is a body, soul, city government. And you don't do working peoples like this. We are council people. We are supposed to do what we have to do to take care of the people that up keep, the keep, the keep, upkeeping of this city. And some people might not, it might not affect you, but when you out there working labor jobs, cause I'm one of them labor workers. And I'm one of them labor workers just to fight for the working people. When people don't get their money, that, that, that bother them. Cause they gotta worry about it. They gotta call that person the next day and tell them they can't pay their bill. City government don't do working people like this. That's all I have to say.
I think I said it. Councilwoman Shaw, then, Councilwoman Johnson.
Mr. President. I tried my best to defeat Mayor Dario Melton in his office. I did not support him. I worked hard to get my candidate in office, but B S has made my candidate in not to fail. Dario Melton is a merit. And I profess to work with him when he's right. And to be able to differ with him when I perceive him being wrong. Simply because I tried to, Mr. President, I come from a very professional environment. And I'm used to doing things in decent and order. And I'm used to doing things with facts, not in the endos. And I agree with you, Councilman, if a million dollars has been moved without council approval, we need to deal with it. But verbalizing up there without proof is not bringing nothing to me.
Oh, what's up?
No, 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 no. You know what? I don't.
You do not?
No, you know that, but you know. Well, I've always confessed, Mr. President, that there are some people that know some things that others don't. Uh, and that's not right. Because all of us are council people and we should be privileged to the same information. They're not at the same time, but at least within reasonable time. But I find that this is not the case on this council. When I'm finding a lot of scud, dirt, and bad biting behind the doors, uh, shenanigans going on. And I still say, I'm not gonna engage in allegations without proof. But I would tell you, when you bring the proof, I'm gonna be in lockstep with you. Any type of, there's any wrongdoing in our finances, I either will. But if you just wanna verbalize wrongdoing without any proof, don't waste my time with that. But the facts still remain is, y'all, we gotta be serious about this city. We gotta be serious about our finances. And I still say our general fund is the problem. Yeah, the city got bad money, restricted money. We can only use that money for certain things. But why are we got to this dilemma? I understand why because for the last three or four years, we've been having these revenues, but the price of losing service is going up. So it was bound to catch up with us. I predicted two years ago that this day would come and it's here. I hate to say it, but it's here. And we gonna have to deal with it. We gonna have to fix it.
Okay, Councilwoman, then, Councilwoman Thomas, we will talk to the cell phone.
Uh, Mr. President, um, um, I'm pretty sure the, the city do have funds in various banks. But, uh, my question is, when we do bonds and stuff, sometimes we have to have, if I'm not mistaken, certain amount of money into the banks, um, to work with. Also, I'm concerned about the vendors as well. Uh, I understand that vendors had been paid in June. They got vendors as well, maybe it should be paid. Uh, we definitely wanna pay the payroll to the employees if it possible. And what are we talking about doing? It's legal. I have no problem with that because I agree, the workers need to be paid. Uh, uh, we need to know why the funds in there, is they in CDs or what, had accounts in there? Why the funds there? Uh, is it legal? Is it right? You know, what rules it is? And also, I'm gonna say this again, Mr. President, we had, um, talked about, you know, we talked to you before. Please, you know, take charge of these issues. I called you last week and told you, cause I saw this was heading this way. And, uh, and I said, Mr. President, we got emergencies on our way. Please go see the mayor. Please, then. You told me you were gonna go see him on Thursday, Friday. And I saw the mayor money. He said, you didn't talk with him.
Well, let me tell you.
I understand. And also, he said he constantly call you, you never return your call back. But what, I'm not attacking no county. I understand what I'm saying. What we need is the mayor and the president to get together on a court, to work together, for you to come back to us. I'm not attacking you. Now, just listen what I'm saying. We got to come together to get this problem solved. All this bickering and all this slandering, it ain't getting us nowhere. I'm not used to this. I'm not, I don't even care for this. Period, point blank. But what I'm saying is, we must, you and him are gonna have to get in there. If y'all have to tag each other ass up in there. But when you come out, we need to come together as one. And come to us, but we can handle business like it should be handled. We don't need to circle out him. We need to take care of business. That's all the people on Facebook and this wanna see a mess. We need to handle business, uh, Mr. President. Please, all I ask you, get with the mayor. And I mentioned this before, y'all get together to what needs to be done, but we can take care of this issue. And also, if we got money, let pay these vendors. They got them as well. Let's pay these vendors as well.
Okay. I do can come with you, Councilman Thomas? Well, while I'm at Boston Community College, y'all backstabbing me and cutting me to the corner. And one thing about it now, you have to be very careful when you're around. You said all the time. No, I'm not gonna call you now. Because what you, well, I'm not gonna say you, but when the mayor wanna get in contact with me, he can. So let's not be selective with it.
Okay, but I got you. I'm not talking, I'm not talking, then I, then I talk to you, Mr. President.
Look, you talk to me.
And you tell me you're coming down to talk with the mayor.
And tomorrow, I'm gonna show my hand.
Please do that. That's all I, that's all I, that's all I.
Just because, just because, one thing about talking with him, with him, you have to have a dialogue, not a mob law. But see, one thing about it is, I don't play games. I don't retaliate against people cause people gonna go my way. I reached, what I tried to do is off the olive branch. But see, we gotta be honest up here. Because we smiling at each other's face, we stabbing each other every minute on that.
But Mr. Thomas said, we go low, you go high. So if he acting up, you don't do that.
I will.
Then we have to take care of responsibilities. That's all I'm saying.
My responsibilities has always been as councilperson. To try to be me. And I catch hell just trying to work with, with some of the people who backstabbing me. But that's not my nature. I know I am the president of this council and come hell and high water. I'm gonna continue doing my job regardless of who stabbing me because this way, God gonna take care of me.
Call my, call my, the board.
Hold up. All right, um, um, I, I, you know, um, the council's a finance committee, right? And we owe the finance, we owe the money, but we don't have nobody on there.
Hold up, excuse me, what I'm saying? I can call him back. He, he'll change his number five times. I can tell that.
We can call him, raise the business?
Yeah, he probably on my Facebook line, mayor call, President Boo.
Go ahead.
But, uh, what I'm saying is, uh, the council's a finance committee. And, uh, mo- most cities that have a council that's a finance committee, they have someone that is an ex-officer on their, on the bank's account, on different banks. Every bank that we have, uh, finance money in, we should have, President Boo should be able to go in there and see what funds we got. You know, not to say, don't put him down, he can, he can get money out of there, but he can have excess to our accounts. See, see now, uh, we been blindsided because they saying we don't have no money. So all the people out there, if you think I'm lying to you, go to Marion Banks, ask that somebody in city hall authorized a one point two million, one point five million dollar for Marion Bank. And they put it in, uh, uh, what is it, bank trust, uh?
Trust.
Trust, trust, trust card, trust card. And, uh, uh, what, what's the county is, uh, not, uh?
C D.
What?
Mutual fund?
Mutual fund.
Money market?
Money market, money market. All right, so if a money, if you put money in the money market, that's, it's, it's all restrictions that got in it. I, I'm not a banker, but you, you, you can get money out of that. I, I want to say it, three times, either three times a month or three times a year out of money market. You won't be penalized cause your money is liquid money. So when, when you have money, your money, we got that money sitting over in, in, uh, our trust card bank. And you telling me, we can't pay our, we can't, and all the banks too, and you telling me can't pay our employees? That is crazy. That is, that's unbelievable. But like I said, uh, uh, Mr. President, but we need to put you on these, on these accounts so you can be able to go in there and look. And you come back and tell us what you see because everybody in the finance office, they afraid of the mayor. They gonna say what he want them to say. They, they afraid of. And that's why I said, we need subpoena them to come to council meeting. I wanna see finance people at council meeting Tuesday. I don't know how we gonna do it, but if tell them that they don't come, they ain't gotta come. We just fund their position. They, they'll show up and they won't get paid. Cause, cause we wanna ask them some, some questions. And we can't ask you no questions cause the mayor don't allow them to speak to us. So we got to subpoena them to come here. You know, cause it's not fair to us to be saying, putting out, we, the city broke, we got money. I, I don't like that. That, that's unbelievable, uh, to, to make folks think they not gonna get their paychecks and things like that. But I'm, I'm gonna be quiet on that, but, Mr. President, we need to put you on our council. I, I ought to thank him. Cause right now is, uh, well, all the mechanics, I've had, uh, uh, Sequina, Oliver, and, uh,
Ronnie Way.
Ronnie Way. So those three people is on those count. And we, we don't have nobody to tell us what we need to know because Ronnie Way, she not there. So we need to put you on that as well. So you can go in there and, and see what we got.
All right, Councilwoman Shaw.
Uh, first, Mr. President, I wanna thank you for having all those meetings with the mayor and you continue to have. You, I constantly rag on you for not taking me into meetings like that about going along. Uh, you, you let me do that. You let me tell you all about that. I wanna thank you for, uh, recently going into a meeting with the mayor and I heard about it later and I called you yet again.
Matter of fact, it was Monday.
I called you yet again. Corey, cause Corey, but I called you casually. Why didn't you go in another meeting with Doc? So I wanna thank you for all those meetings you continue to have with the mayor. Our responsibility is to the people and this city, period. The people and this city, period. We need to have our treasurer back in that office, Mr. President. And I understand that we need to be working on something at the special call meeting on tomorrow or in between that, uh, to get her back. We need her. I've never seen this happen before. And it could happen before. I've never seen it happen before. I'm old enough, and I told y'all over and over again. I'm old enough that I've seen all the mayors that you all have seen. I've seen all mayors. Seen them all operate. But I've never seen this kind of debacle before, ever. And y'all know how long I've been coming to council you. I was a peewerner on that side of this panel, sitting that office, watching things go down. And then came a memo on this side. It's a whole nother story on this side, trust me, y'all. On the inside, looking out, is a totally different story. I have not seen anything like this one, this story that's being told now. I'm not seeing it the same way.
Sure.
Uh, okay, we, we, we understand that we got the, uh, the workers, the payroll. How much that come up to be?
Four hundred thousand.
Okay, we talking about a million now. That's for this week coming, that's a month, a weekly pay, uh, every two weeks.
Well, it's bi-weekly then weekly.
Four hundred thousand?
Yeah.
Okay, also, we got a lot of vendors out there. I don't know how much that gonna come up to be. Now, once that go, if our revenues don't come in, cause a lot of people are paying their, their profits tax at the end of February, I think it's deadline February. We got some funds coming in. My question is, we gotta go back to that account again if we don't have enough revenues coming in. We got enough, I know, but we got enough money in the bank to keep this going, to keep the payment going for the employees, hopefully. So right now, we just concentrating on what needs to be done, asked up to Friday. And, um, but you don't know what the debt is with the vendors that we owe right now either at this moment.
But I guarantee you, if y'all follow my lead and don't shoot me down, I guarantee you we'll have a true victorious for what our finances look like. I just need y'all vote. And that's leadership.
Yeah, my vote.
So, uh, cell phones? Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes, uh, President, uh, Booey, uh, I know we, we spoke about the, um, the cell phones, you know, some of our cell phones are off and some of them are on. Well, I am, uh, where my cellphone is off. I've been using my personal phone. A lot of my constituents been have to locate me through my family or come up here to try to find me or contact me. And I wanna say this is, this is me speaking, uh, that I don't think it's fair that some of our phones are off and some of our phones are on. Because we all, uh, a lot of people might not deal with a lot of their constituents like I do, which I do on an everyday basis, doing things. And I don't feel comfortable for them to have to come up here and try to locate me or try to find me or try to, uh, get, uh, what they need done. So I'm asking you to, uh, I need my phone back on for my constituents. Or either, uh, give me another phone with something else.
I thought we had a pass. But she made a statement saying some of our phones on, I'm, I'm wearing my phone at all.
My phone ain't on.
My phone.
It's about four or five phones on. I don't see.
Yeah, my phone's not on.
I don't use it.
I don't use my own personal phone.
I think, I didn't use it.
Well, it was, it's not about who use their phone, but I'm saying, my phone is used a lot because my constituents, they call me. Like they have to come to, like, I have a new number.
It's called we do.
Well, I'm not talking, I'm, I'm talking to President Booey, not to, not to Councilwoman Shaw. President Booey, I represent one seven. I don't worry about nobody else sitting up here. Because, uh, when my, my constituents call me, I go and see what they need done in my board. And, uh, I would like to help, uh, my service where, that they can call me so I can be. And, uh, I would like to help, uh, my service where, that they can call me so I can be serving them.
Okay. Well, I guess we can vote on Tuesday night, find a line, line item where money's gonna come from, for those who would like to get a phone.
I think, Mr. President, we need to ask the mayor for this reason, shut off the phone. I think, I think that's gonna be important.
I shouldn't have, can I say this, can I say this?
There has to be a reason.
Let me tell you something, can I say something, President Booey? I am an elected official, just like the mayor. I was, I was elected by my constituents in Ward Seven. The mayor was elected by the citizen that lives in the city of Seven. I don't need to go to the mayor to ask the mayor why my cellphone is off. Because I use it a lot, yes. Because I talk, I do a lot. You might not do what I do, but I communicate with my city. And I don't have to go to the mayor. The mayor is the elected official just like I am. And I feel like that I, I don't have to go and ask him to turn my phone off. When other phones are on, when other people are working for this city, don't get out there and work in the community, and they're using their cellphone. So your, your comments about me telling me to go ask the mayor, I will not go ask the mayor twice.
Mr. President, I don't think this is a subject that needs to, that we need to prolong the time on. We voted, um, uh, that we would get a company for the funds. And we just need to vote, um, on where, which line item this is going to come from and move on from it. This. At the last meeting.
We did? I checked the minutes, I thought we did.
Yeah, just check the minutes, I'm, I'm almost certain, uh, because we, we stumbled at Ward, uh, Ward.
Council members.
We'll check the minutes.
Talk about it.
We'll check the minutes.
Yeah, check, check, check the minutes, check, check the minutes. So if, if we didn't, and if we do, um, this is not something we need to continue.
Okay, Councilwoman, uh, Thomas, four and five, nine, I mean, uh?
Yes, uh, I was talking about the, uh, uh, there's been a minute that I have had several work orders put in. My work orders have been put in over five or six months ago about my ward. In several areas from, uh, Tenth Avenue to Cedar to, uh, Birch, all over in that area, coming back over to the other area. Uh, I know that we paid twenty-five thousand dollars to fix the pot truck, in the pot truck. It was supposed to come out and repair. And, uh, once before, they said it didn't have any asphalt to, to, to repair. But recently, a lot of asphalt been repaired in certain wards. Uh, I have, uh, it shouldn't be, my ward should not have to wait almost seven months to fix a hole. And, uh, people cards have been, they're going in the hole. So I wanna know, is this asphalt, uh, is this truck out here repaired? I need you to find out, because my, my work order was did over six months ago. I keep up, I do a daily, monthly keep, record keep. And, uh, you know, where my constituents lives at, those potholes, uh, they are getting bigger when it rain and, uh, there's no, no repairing to be done, nobody.
Well, I called the mayor's office, eight seven four twenty-one oh one, check.
Uh, I, I, I have called the mayor's office, and why I'm going subtle is, I received a stack of work orders came back from the mayor's office, was put in my box Monday, that I had been placed work orders since July, work to be done. And, uh, we have, uh, we say communication, this council tell us communication. What we do is not a joke. When we go into the mayor's office, we got to pass the door, a doorbell, which we have in cameras, doorbells, and then you still have to knock. People are watching, you on the outside. What I do is not funny. When I come to you, I come to you with all of what I need to get done. When public work is not serving, uh, doing the work that we asked for the work order, we have to get, we, sometimes we go out and get our own help. We use our discretionary, like Mr. Tyler DeShoe said, give up all your discretionary. If we don't do some of the things we need to do in our ward, uh, like these potholes and some of this grass overgrown, it might, uh, we don't know what our neighborhood will become or what it would look like. So we take the effort to, to keep the upstanding in where we live at in Ward Seven.
Councilwoman Bailey?
Uh, according to attorney, uh, we can use our oilies money to patch potholes. So you can actually buy asphalt with your oilies money, because it's a maintenance type deal. So I would suggest, obviously, if you have potholes in your ward, we all look at it and figure out somebody who can tell us what, you know, how much we're gonna fill the hole. And then we can look and see if we can't bulk buy it, and see if the mayor let us use the pothole truck and get it filled up. If not, hire another company to come in here and do that, just bypass the whole thing and make it work. Uh, as for my phone, I don't want another phone. If you need me, call three three four, three one five, five one six nine, and holler at me. You people around the folks that I work for, everyone in this audience that's a resident of Southern Alabama. Again, three three four, three one five, five one six nine.
Mr. President, I, I, I just wanna ask a question, uh, uh, did any other council members, uh, get all their work orders back to size?
I did, yes, we all, they got a copy, we all got a copy of it.
And y'all, y'all, and y'all don't have no problem with that?
It's gonna move on, it's that.
The way I understood it, they gave everybody a copy, they got a copy, and we got a copy too. Just give everybody a copy of it.
But they not signed it.
They not done, the work is not.
I know, the work ain't been done, he just, well, I understand.
Why you know?
Because I asked, that's why I know.
But they don't answer the problem.
I asked, well, I just, when I saw them, same thing, when, when I got the phone, I try to get everything I can when I can. That's how I know, I ask question when I get an opportunity to see them. So that's why I say, um, I saw these, these things in my box, and I wanna know where are they in my box, that we just give everybody a copy, we got it. Not saying the work ain't done, just got copies of it. So that's it, but you can have a record yourself of what you did. I, I know, but that's what they are. See, again, we jumped to conclusion, we didn't wait, this is what going on, so that's what happened with that. And again, while I'm on, let me say this, President, I wasn't attacking you, I, I made a statement every time. I, I know, I hope not. All I'm saying, I just want us to be able to come together. That's all I'm saying, that's all I'm saying. How we do it, uh, when we do it, I just pray the law will get this taken seriously.
Sooner than later.
That's my point, that's all I'm saying, that's all I'm saying. That's the thing about a panel, it's ways both ways. Well, I understand, but leave to your part, I appreciate it.
Grab the pencil, hold it in the middle, let's get this thing sorted.
Councilwoman.
President Booey, it's not, the only thing that I reject about this panel sitting up there is that, because you don't do, sometimes some people might, might not be very active in their community and do things with their ward. I, I, I object to anyone that has anything to say about me, how I conduct myself in Ward Seven, through my constituents, through the phone, or whatever. Because what I do is I do it because I live there and I want my neighborhood to be safe, and I want my neighborhood to be clean, and I want the people in my neighborhood to be able to communicate. So every time I say so, since I've been here, you know, November be two years, and since I've been here, I have some people always try to nicket to you, you try to undermine me. So I want people to know, don't undermine me on what I do and how I do it.
All right, Councilwoman.
Um, I, I need to get my copies, and so you all have copies of my work orders returned, y'all have copies. Um, I'm gonna go get them. Um, we don't need copies, we need the work done. Everybody in this building, from the first floor to the second floor, know that we have copies right here in this office, because our, they originate from us. We already have copies of this, so I don't know. And I didn't look at it, maybe y'all say this work, maybe it says this work is complete. And I can understand why y'all have copies returned to y'all in your boxes.
I understand, nothing.
You're not saying anything, I understand. We don't need co, we, the work order originates from this office. So we're, we're using, let's save a treat, we're using some more paper to give another copy. We don't need copies, we need the work done. Y'all got four or five months of pa, uh, uh, work orders returned? Just a copy of it?
From July.
Our administrative assistant, y'all already know she has our copies in the office. That's the reason these things are in the box.
Okay, last two, uh, Councilwoman Benjamin, Ward Four ditch project, and what was it? Okay, go ahead.
Uh, I just wanna say to, to, uh, President Booey, I wanted, I was, uh, Mr. Darryl Stewart for Stewart Construction, and I'm so glad that people hear me and people see what I'm trying to do in my community. Mr. I, I want this to be known, because I don't want the mayor to say any, or attack Mr. Darryl Stewart or anything, or anyone that's reaching out trying to help me clean up my neighborhood. Uh, Mr. Darryl Stewart offered to help me with, over in the area with Knox School. Everyone knows where I live at over in that area, Ward Seven. Some areas, uh, need to be improved, infrastructure, cleanup. Uh, he called me this morning, and, uh, we went out in that junkyard with City Ball. This is city park, where the city is not keeping the beautification of it up over there when it's raining. So he, I met with him, and he's gonna bring in some of his equipment to help me clean that area up, to make it look better over there in that area. So I wanted, uh, I wanted, Mr. President, to know that someone has reached out and my colleagues there to help me, and also someone has reached out to help me take the fees off of the buildings, the, the game signs off of the building, they're willing to come out and do some work with me in my ward. So when people do, do things like that, I wanted to run it across to you. So we'll have documentation of that when he goes, comes out to start helping me on Sunday. Sunday morning, he's supposed to start doing something.
Mr. Stewart is very.
Yes, he called me.
All right, Councilwoman Benjamin?
I've gone over item number six a lot, Mr. President, somewhere. As the official, when we're taking the votes, I will, uh, bring back the fact that we, we need safeguards in place, a bonded person that is, um, um, watching our backs. We need to know, I will be asking concerning deposits, have deposits been even demanded? Has information been keyed in and accounts payable? The cash on hand in tax and license department? The checks in tax and license department, have they been deposited or are they sitting in the vault? I will be asking all those things in the, in the meeting, for all those things in the meeting, where we can actually vote, Mr. President. I will be asking about the gasoline tax, I will be asking about the sales tax, the general fund, cash on hand, Mr. President. I will be asking about those as well, from the tax and license departments to the finance department. I will be asking those things in the meeting where we can vote.
Will somebody be here to answer those, answer those?
That's why I'm telling you, because I need him here. Uh, you know, I, you know, we have a person here that said, uh, we need to subpoena them.
Yeah, subpoena.
Uh, so if it ends up that we have to subpoena to get that, Mr. President, then subpoena. Uh, item number, um, seven is the Ward Four ditch project. That's an announcement that I'm gonna make when we're actually on the radio, I'm on, uh, Ward Four to know that we're starting on our ditch project coming up. So that's actually an announcement that I want them to be aware, that a contractor will be, uh, in and out of Ward Four coming up soon.
All right, beautiful, uh, go ahead, Councilwoman. I hope we don't, I, I like the bus gets worse to keep coming in our mail box for this reason. Because after hours sometime on weekend, we can't get into it with our secretary, we at least have a copy to show our constituents where we did put the request in. It really helps, you know, so like I said, and people call and say, "Well, I'll call you, Micah, and, and have this, the pothole filled." And at least I have a copy of my work order without showing them, I don't put the request in. Because a lot of time, people think we be lying, we don't put the request in. So at least while we have a copy of it, whether it been completed or not, even do show us, show our constituents we had put the request in. So be all of us and be on the mayor, because we did put the request in. So I hope and pray that he put the copies in our box, whether it been completed or not, at least we have a record of it. And that we might be word of sight, you got a hundred things going on, at least when it's after hour, when she ain't there, uh, on weekend, we still go to our home or wherever we at to show the Congress. So, Councilwoman Bailey, Councilwoman Bailey Thomas, and Councilwoman Michelle.
There's not a constituent in Salem that doesn't have a copy of the Ward Four request? Because the first, well, the second thing that Miss Sice, because I don't want people to say she's not in here working. The second thing she does after she sends it to the mayor's office is she sends the constituents a copy. They have a copy. She sends it to them, di-directly to them.
Well, I, I, I don't really get them, I just, I ask them, but she don't.
Call her and text her right time she, she confirm what I said.
I don't know what she did, it's when, because if I don't give her the address, she don't get, you know, but we don't give her address, I just put the request in there. I got a file that's brought up out here, and then there's a lot of times, it's not, people resisting. You understand what I'm saying? So, so.
She's efficient enough, where she researches and she sends out, whether you give the address or not. So I don't wanna take that away from, away from, folks out there in the audience got type of work order request because Miss Sice sent them, sent them to us. We have copies in the office anytime we need to, uh, get them full. Um, this system was created for this reason, and we just, we might have a million dollars worth of paper lying around, or copies of stuff. We get copies of stuff, every time we meet, get a third copy of stuff. That might be a million dollars laying around right there.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman.
And also, Miss Sice does a good job, she, she keeps a dialogue. When you have your ward meeting, uh, if you put in work orders for whoever, like Ms., Ms. Benjamin said, that she does, any work that someone called you about, you, you get their name and their address, and she always send them a, a letter. And also, when you have your ward meeting, that's why it, it always, she's good. She keeps a dialogue, she give you a printout from the whole year, or whenever, how much work you being put out, and you give that to your, your constituents when you have a ward meeting. So we, we practically got a good, uh, secretary that does a good structure of keeping up work order for each one of us.
Councilwoman, Michelle.
You said that, uh, on tomorrow at our call meeting, I am praying that we assemble, we have some real solutions. And we're not, I'm praying for a assembly just to talk about what he said, she said, and what we suspect and what we, uh, want to happen.
Fifteen minute meeting.
I'm hoping and praying that whatever we have, that's gonna be plausible and worthwhile for our employees, is something that we can live with and something that's legal. But if we're not, and if we don't have that, I think we wasting our time and it's giving false hope to our employees. So my point is, if we don't have a solution, I don't think there's a point.
Councilwoman Michelle, like I always say before, I do my homework.
All right, do it. Mr. President, I don't think we need to waste any time on tomorrow. It should be a ten or fifteen minute meeting, and the only focus is to, uh, it should be payroll. Uh, the stuff that I will be asking for is, 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 I will be asking at the next official meeting, which is Tuesday coming up, we don't need to waste any time tomorrow, because it takes a while to print a whole bunch of checks. And, uh, we don't know in time if people are gonna get our work on tomorrow, or they're gonna go home early, and all those, those kinds of things, Mr. President. That meeting tomorrow needs to be quick, fast, in a hurry, and one vote. It should be one vote tomorrow, and that's about payroll.
All right.
Amen.
Let me, suppose, uh, it, uh, the payroll department up here, because he let them go, we are blocking that.
We are, we are busy, and I couldn't do it.
Because that's, it's conspiracy. All right, do I have a motion for adjournment?
Please, my God, yes.
Yes.
Thirty-five, Tom, Chris.